Hello, everybody. Welcome to the work session for Board of Mayor Alderman, September 24, 2019.
He doesn't have his mic on. His mic isn't on.
You want me to start over again? Hello, everybody. September 24, 2019. Citizen comments, items not on the agenda, report from Kevin Riggs on shelter.
Press your button. Don't be like me. I wanted to come tonight and I'll try to be as brief as I can just to kind of give an update on an emergency shelter, homeless shelter that we've had since August 1. And the shelter, our rule of thumb was that if the temperature was 90 and above or 32 and below, we would have this shelter. And no one expected August and September to have as many 90-degree days as they've had. And so what you have, this is kind of my own formation, as far as the table, you know, it's just simply from left to right, of course, the date and the number that night, and then men, women, children averages, then white, black, Hispanic averages, and then monitors, and then you see the cost at the end. The black covers up any personal names that are on there. I didn't get permission from anybody to use their names, so I just blacked those out. But as far as a summary, at the bottom, is kind of a summary of it. As of tonight, all of our nights have been at Franklin First United Methodist Church. They open up their facilities to us, and it's a wonderful facility for what we're doing. But since August 1, we've had 32 nights of shelter. Now, counting tonight, there's been 55 nights, so 32 out of the 55 nights, we have provided shelter at the church. All total, 315 people, and so that's 315 beds we provided, two meals a day, a supper and a breakfast, so 630 meals have been provided. We've had 30 different individuals who have stayed at least one night. Six of them have been children. And then, as far as our average each night for the 30, we've averaged 10 individuals a night, six women, four men, on average, and women have far outnumbered really men on a few of the nights especially. Of the 10, on average, six white, four black. We had one Hispanic family early on, so they're, you know, .25. I mean, just the one time. For total cost, this is what it's cost us to do the shelter so far. The total cost has been $7,645. That comes to $238.91 per night to operate the shelter, which equals out to $23.89 per person per night is the breakdown of that. Now, just to compare that, if we were to put these people in hotels, which sometimes is the custom, a hotel would be $75 to $80 per night. And so there's a great cost savings in doing it this route for the nonprofits with the shelter. And in my conversation with the Salvation Army, they strive for $35 a night per person. And so we're coming in at $24 a night, which is below the industry standard, I guess, for a lack of a better way to say it. All total during this time, the community has stepped up. 11 different restaurants have provided meals, and you can see those, those are listed there. But 11 different restaurants, one church, and three individuals have provided meals. And here's, to me, the best news of it all. Since August 1, we, and by "we" our ministry, Franklin Community Development, Franklin Community Church, we have placed six individuals or families who have come through the shelter into permanent housing. And so they come to the shelter, and then we get them into housing because of a grant that we have received. Our expectation is that another two or three individuals or families that have come through the shelter will be placed in permanent housing in the next couple of weeks. We're waiting on apartments to come available. We've got them online, we pay their deposits, and we're just waiting for them to become available. And so that would increase that number. Without our emphasis on rapid rehousing, our nightly averages would have been closer to 20 each night instead of 10. And these are just the city of Franklin, basically the city limits of Franklin. Our agreement with First United Methodist Church is that we would not exceed 12 people per night. And so you can see that we've reached our capacity at the church. All total, since July, we've placed 11 individuals or families who are homeless into permanent housing. So six that have come through the shelter, the other ones who we've met either before the shelter opened, or they never came to the shelter, but we found out who they were and have helped get them into permanent housing. For the very first time, as far as I know anyway, homelessness is being tracked in our city and county through HMIS, which stands for Homeless Management Information System. That's a nationwide tracking system that is operated through HUD. And since June of 2019, we have placed 40-plus people into that system, HMIS, 40-plus people that were homeless in our city that we have placed in the tracking system. Our goal when it comes to homelessness in Franklin Williamson County is to reach, the term is functional zero, which means that the city and the county have an effort where a system is in place to make homelessness rare, brief, and quickly solved through rapid rehousing. Our goal is to get them out of shelter into a house as quickly as possible. And I think you've seen that we've done our best to reach that goal so far with what we've done. As of right now, the emergency shelter is being managed and financed through Franklin Community Development, which is a ministry of Franklin Community Church. However, we do have a new nonprofit that's been formed, Williamson County Homeless Alliance. You may know that or you may not. But Williamson County Homeless Alliance, and once all the 501(c)(3) paperwork has been approved, then I anticipate that we'll shift things over to that nonprofit. But until then, Franklin Community Development is managing it and running it and all of that. The stated goal, however, the Williamson County Homeless Alliance is a permanent shelter in Williamson County. The big weakness of an emergency shelter is we're only open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and then the next day it's, well, we'll see you later, see you tonight. And you don't really have a chance to try to holistically address the problems that the people are facing, because it's just when the temperature's a certain degree, and only for a, you know, particular period of time. And so a more permanent shelter would give us the opportunity to deal with the issues. To me, the major issue's mental illness. We've had two or three occasions where mental illness has been severe. We had to call the ambulance on one of the ladies yesterday. She was just having a break with reality. And so that is, to me, the biggest issue that we're facing with this. But the stated goal is that we will have a permanent location, and we are actively searching for a permanent location. We've tried to pinpoint within the Mack Hatcher corridor as the best place for that to go. And the goal is also for it to be county-wide. Right now, we don't have any outreach, because the second night of the shelter, we reached capacity, so I didn't try to outreach into some, you know, into Fairview and Nolansville and on out to county. I have been in conversations with Sheriff Rhodes, but we kind of just, I don't have anywhere to put them, so we kind of just stopped trying to do any type of outreach from that. But the goal is that it would be something that would serve our entire county at some point. So I just wanted to come tonight just to be open and vulnerable and let you guys know, because as we move forward, there will be obviously occasions where we have to come back and talk about some things. But I thought this would just be a time just to let you know what's going on since August 1.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody have any questions for Kevin Alderman? Peter Martin?
Kevin, before you started at the Methodist Church, there were a few individuals that were sleeping around on porches and things. Are they included in the group that goes to the church?
Some of them are.
Can they go if they want to?
Yes, yeah. Anybody can come when we're open on those nights. And, you know, for years, our church has housed some of the men who are on the streets, and most of them will come. But a lot of those men are in our group homes, so we had them housing for a couple of years now. But the thing that I've been surprised about is the number of women. And based on what the women tell me, there's a whole lot more out there sleeping in their cars. And the idea of women, some of them with children, but most of them single, but the idea of a large population of women in our city and county that are sleeping in their cars behind stores should concern all of us.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Kevin, you mentioned mental illness. So when we get people of that nature in our community, what can we do? Is there any facilities within Middle Tennessee where they can go?
Well, there's not any facilities in Franklin or Williamson County. The problem you run into is with the homeless population is they don't have insurance. And so unless they're a threat to themselves or to someone else, you know, if they're a threat to themselves or someone else, you can admit them involuntarily into the emergency room for evaluation. But if they're just mentally ill, but they're not a threat to anyone, then there's nowhere for us, and if there is, they don't have insurance, and so they're not going to be accepted anyway. Now, you know, you have places in Nashville, but so far it's been my experience is everybody is full. Now, if you have insurance or you have money, they're not full. But if you don't have anything, they're full.
What I wanted to know, though, if they are a threat to themselves or someone else, are there facilities in the state of Tennessee or Middle Tennessee where they can be placed?
No, it'd be, what we would do is take them to the hospital.
And then they would deal with that.
And then they would either go to Roland Hills for a little while. I've taken, just in my own ministry, I've taken some people to the hospital, and then they ended up in a place in Murfreesboro. But usually it's short, it's usually at short term, 30 days at the most, usually just a couple of weeks. And they, you know, they medicate them and let them back out.
Well, actually, you know, it's not, I think there's a bigger issue here.
Yes.
Anyway, the other question I had real quick was, and this has been mentioned in our community, and this is in no way, shape, or form being said to say, "Don't do this, ministry." Absolutely not. But how do we control our community without, you know, really ministering and taking care of the people in our community? Organizations, our nonprofits, our churches come together and take care of people in need without attracting other people outside of our area or in need and go, "Oh, Franklin has this, so we're going to go there." And so then it becomes, how do we keep it from becoming unsustainable and also not taking care of our own people?
Right.
So I'm not actually looking for you to answer that whole thing, Guy, because I know the mayor wants to move forward, but, you know, that's something that I think we need to talk about.
Yeah, we have, we put together a business plan, which is basically a philosophy, and I addressed some of that in that plan. Anybody who wants a copy, let me know, and I'll get you a copy. It's over 100 pages with all the supporting evidence, but I can get you a copy. But what research shows is across the country, and I've found this to be true here, but across the country, 85% of homeless are homeless in the cities in which they live. Only 15% is transient. And so the idea, "If you build it, you will come," is a myth. It seems that way, but based on the studies, and that's from Seattle, I've talked with the Nashville homeless people. The National Rescue Mission says 85% of who they work with every year are from Nashville. They're not from surrounding counties. And so the perception is, if you build it, they will come. But in reality, that's a small percentage of the people who are homeless.
Good to go. Thanks.
Anybody else ready to roll? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Who's going to add?
Well, I just wanted to know how you go from homelessness to apartment. Is that a financial need that you have, or want to talk off the line?
No, it's a financial need. I mean, our church received a grant, a pretty substantial grant from HUD that moves people from homelessness to housing. And so we can help anywhere from a month up to a year with the rent and the utilities, with the goal is that by the time that period is over with, they're able to take care of themselves. And, but anyway, so that's how that works.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, we're ready to roll with item one, event permit for celebration of nations benefiting sister cities at Bicentennial Park. Any questions?
New location this year.
Item two, Resolution 2019-84 to rescind Resolution Number 2019-24 to submit an application to the Baseball Tomorrow Fund for the renovation of the irrigation system at Jim Warren Park.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just to rescind. We originally applied for a grant with Baseball Tomorrow, which is through the Major League Baseball Program. They're restructuring, and they contacted each of the applicants that we could reapply in 2020, so we'll come back at that time.
Okay. Item three, Resolution 2019-94, Resolution to amend City of Franklin Contract 2019-0007, Parkland Agreement Impact Fee and Greenway Trail System Construction Agreement between the City of Franklin and Clayton Properties Group, Inc. You're the road show guy, aren't you?
It's not that Clayton.
Not that Clayton. It's just adding some additional language that was part of, under the general terms and conditions, we reviewed this with the law department, and they approved. But it is adding that as we, also with the name change on the contract.
Alderman Peterson.
So exactly, I mean, I read it, you know, but it just said that whenever they do something, then the city takes over? But that would've been what we would normally do anyway, right?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, if I may explain.
Please.
So under the Parkland impact fees, it could be that it could stay a private trail as they receive funding. This particular one would receive, it would be a public trail system, and it would also connect to the new extension of Mack Hatcher and some additional properties the city has easements through at a later date. So therefore, we would take over the maintenance once it's turned over and complete to us.
Okay, but this is also a part of some other developments that have already occurred?
Yes, ma'am.
And I drove out there again today. I've been out there before, but not much.
Not yet.
That's right.
Not yet. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're ready for item four, Resolution 2019-92, Resolution to select the pedestrian improvements design concept for the Lewisburg Avenue Pedestrian Improvements Project.
So as we move forward with items in your 10-year capital investment plan, this is one that had been included at a certain funding level in the approved plan, and we wanted to bring forward, though, the various options that have been developed to make sure that we're on the right track in terms of what the board is expecting out of this project. So I'd like to have Paul kind of take you through that, answer any questions. I think we have some folks here from the public who want to engage on this as well. So Paul, take it away.
So as we were going through the CIP, we heard multiple ones associated with this project as far as the limits of it. What was included in the CIP is this exhibit number one here that shows the sidewalk, really just making it closer down to the railroad tracks at $1 million. The next option that we heard was trying to extend it to Thompson Alley, and we didn't recommend this option, because if we're going to take the effort to cross CSX railroad tracks, we should try to do it on both sides of the tracks. But this here is another option.
So could I ask, could I ask why? We felt like we had to do both sides?
The permitting process is pretty difficult with CSX. And if we're going to go through the effort of dealing with them, we should try to get the crossing done on both sides of the roadway, would be our recommendation. That was about $2.1 million. The next option would be to try to start a multi-use trail on the south side that could one day be extended down Lewisburg Pike all the way to Mack Hatcher. This would at least get it to the park system right there. And the last option, which is obviously the most expensive, would be to try to take that multi-use trail all the way to Eastern Flank Park. And we heard multiple different options. Now, we still have to go back and look at our funding abilities associated with these, but we were trying to get some direction from the board on what the preferred option was.
Do you have an interest in this, Alderman Martin? Please go ahead.
I do. All right. I have looked at this. I think option one is kind of silly. Just that little stretch right there. If you're going to do it, go on and at least do it across the railroad and down to the park, I mean, down to Thompson Alley. I would suggest option three, and I had thought maybe without the western link. But if you think that's important enough to do, I was just trying to save money. Option three is 3,400, $3,400. And if you think that little stretch right there is worth it, and you do?
I do, because you're pretty much going to be rebuilding the road with utilities when you end up having to do this job.
And I think people need to understand, this isn't just laying a concrete path. This is infrastructure and fire plugs and utility poles and everything.
The second you put the storm drainage in, you start impacting other utilities, and you start having to move those other utilities. And hopefully that doesn't happen, but from our observations and our review of the survey, the pipe that will have to go in the ground to provide storm drainage starts impacting a lot of different utilities.
So the sidewalk itself is the least...
Correct.
...important, even though it's important to those of us who need to travel.
It's probably the least costly. It's obviously important, but from a cost standpoint, it's probably the least expensive element of the project.
I think people need to understand that. When you showed option one and said that would be $1 million, you know, that's kind of silly looking, to think that thing right there would cost $1 million. But that's the least...
Correct.
...part of it.
Because right where that turbine gutter goes and the storm drainage goes, there's gas lines and water lines that all need to be moved.
I would really like to see us go on at least and do option three, because if you stopped it at Thompson Alley, it would give those people an opportunity to walk to town, but it would give the people downtown the opportunity to walk to Eastern Flank.
Alderman Speedy.
Could you expand a little more about option four? Said staff didn't recommend that because of potential funding and grant funding through the NPO, and maybe let us know a little more about that, what project that is?
And it's not that we're against option four, it was just a big cost jump from what was included in the CIP. If the board wanted to do option four, I'd say we'd probably need to take a step back and look at our financial CIP plan to make sure it's all feasible, but we're not opposed to it. It's what's in the long-term capital plan and our comprehensive transportation network plan to provide that. And one day it'll connect to the Mack Hatcher trail system on the southeast section of Mack Hatcher. So it was a big jump in scope is why we didn't go there.
But we did hear some inquiries about this very project, so we wanted to bring that back. There might be the potential, if we step back to pursue some grant opportunities, kind of like we've been able to secure along 96 West, but there's some uncertainty with that. So that's what we want to kind of get on the table now.
Alderman Bransford, then Alderman Blanton.
Well, I was sort of under the impression and hoping that we could go all the way to the park, because it was, my whole mindset was that we could connect our parks. The Carter Hill Park to the Eastern Flank would be a nice walkable adventure. And I see the cost is pretty stiff there, but I think if, long-term, if we want to think about that some more, that maybe, that would be where I would initially want to go, is to connect the parks.
While I'm waiting on Alderman Blanton, I see you go all the way down to the road, the entrance into Eastern Flank on option four. So that means the pedestrians would be walking with the traffic at their back.
Potentially, yes.
So I mean, it might be a little less if you went into the exit entrance.
Yeah. You could look at that as well. Could we do that? Yeah. Don't have to go to the entrance.
Definitely shorten that up.
Exit entrance.
Oh, yeah, the closest, the closest. Or create a new, create a new entrance, I mean, a walkover entrance.
Yeah, we could look at that.
You have existing trail system within the park. We could look at how we connect to that.
Alderman Blanton.
I think, obviously, I'm for as far as we can go, just because I think what we find is, we end up with so many gaps around the city as it is, that it'd just be one more gap that we're leaving open. But I'm wondering too, not necessarily as far as creating it physically, I mean, I had a couple of phone calls today, so this isn't my original idea, but the opportunity to plan for it, to go all the way to Mack Hatcher, just, and then phase it, it makes me wonder, if we go as far as to connect to Mack Hatcher, TDOT may be a little bit more amenable to help us, because we're connecting to one of their absolute roads. So it's a little bit easier to ask for partnership money when you're actually standing right next to their property. So that would be my suggestion, at least even from a planning perspective, to plan for it to go all the way to Mack Hatcher, and then talk about some phasing options, but giving them the full scope so it might help us defer some of the costs to complete an entire project instead of leaving gaps.
Yeah.
Alderman Burger, then I've got Alderman Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ditto Pearl's suggestion, I'd rather go all the way to the park. Question, I know that we've had pretty good cushion with our reserve funds, and we wanted to possibly, as our consultant said, they like to see that you're not piling and piling up the reserve funds to a certain extent, you use some of those. Have we looked at using any reserve funds for a project, because we thought of smaller projects where we could pay as you go? That would be one suggestion I'd have, and Eric, you're shaking your head, we might want to talk about that. But the other thing is grants, access to tourism grants as well, we might be looking at that. Is Ellie still here? Is she back? Oh, hey, Ellie. We might want to look at some tourism grants to see what we could get to connect to the park. And then Alderman Blanton's idea about going all the way to Mack Hatcher eventually, to plan that, to me, I believe the plan should be to Mack Hatcher, but...
Our comprehensive transportation network plan has that already to do that.
Yes.
So it's just a matter of what we want to...
It's not about design.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Because it is, and it is in that plan. But she's right, the design. So I would like to look at the design all the way to Mack Hatcher. I'd like to talk to TDOT, I'd like to talk to the state about that. I would also like to look at reserve dollars, and I'd like to look at tourism grants. And it's never going to get any less expensive, so I'm with Alderman Martin on, number one just makes no sense to me. And I think we're only talking between the last two, $5 million versus $3.4 million, so we can make that up in grants. I would think instead of just going to Thompson Alley, was that the third one, right past there? I would think that we want to go all the way to the park, make that more walkable.
Let me address the question on reserve elements. When we built the capital investment financing strategy, one of the elements we used is cash available. And you've identified above your reserve requirements, 45%, above that 45% threshold, those dollars in your general fund reserve are available for pay-as-you-go capital. We've also, of course, factored in what we anticipate in debt service in the future. So we have really planned for the use of reserves. Of course, we're pretty conservative in how we look at our projections going out. And when we did the financial plan to go with the capital investment plan, we funded approximately $280 million worth of projects, and we had identified capacity around $308 million. So there is a little more above that, but we want to protect ourselves, because we know projects have a way of coming in higher than we expect when they go to bid and other elements happen and change. So we feel like we were, while we were conservative, we used the capacity we felt we could legitimately put on the table, if you could, for projects. And that does include reserves or pay-as-you-go above the threshold that we've identified in our financial policies and strategy there. So we've really pretty much programmed what we can expect, or conservatively expect, in the 10-year window at this point. But there is always the potential. One option for us to look at is, we've earmarked a little over $1 million in the CIP, and we could prioritize the use of those initial dollars to do design work, to get ourselves ready to pursue grant opportunities, be it tourism, be it TDOT, you know, some of the elements, the enhancement grants that we were able to get to help us with 96 West. We might be able to revisit that path on this path. So that, those are all things we can look at as options, and there may be some value engineering we can do. As Paul said, the long-term plan would be to connect... As the, as Paul said, the long-term plan would be to connect to Mack Hatcher and have that kind of connectivity uh, in our network overall. And that's what we try to do wherever we can.
Alderman Peterson.
Thank you. Not me. Uh, first of all, even number, even exhibit, uh, A, page four is a long way for Mack Hatcher. This is not really any, you know, there's, there's a lot more past this to get all the way to Mack Hatcher. But, um, and also there would be, you know, people, uh, many different, um, lots that we would have to go through, you know, and everything for that. Uh, I kind of like the idea of maybe getting to though the, the first.
Exit entrance.
The exit entrance. But you know, no, but, but the, the point you made about being able to walk, uh, facing the traffic though, is also an important, uh, aspect there. Uh, so I, I, I did, I did really like that now that we're looking at it. Um, and you know, we have heard people say, the people that live out here say that people come through the yards, you know, and everything, that they're wanting to make the connection up to the, uh, to the Carter House and, and in that area. So this would certainly help that a great deal.
To the red section two, just as a point of clarification, is a proposed multi-use trail, which is 12-foot wide of concrete or asphalt.
That's good.
And we could definitely get that first section done and we can design even more. And it's a no-brainer to go for a NPO grant, especially once Mack Hatcher happens for the long term.
May I say, if we're going to get anything from T-Dot, we will need to get four-laning that part of Mack Hatcher. Number one, before we ask for anything else from them.
And we have been.
That has been the worst, that has been the worst level of traffic in the city for 15 years.
We have been successful in getting at least that on the preliminary engineering funding by T-Dot. So there is progress being made.
Appreciate it.
And so, yeah, that, that, seeing how these pieces could come together could be really beneficial.
And the funding pot we would go for after this would be a different funding pot than that roadway job would entail. So they're two totally different pots of money, but I agree, that is the number one, one of the number one problems.
But let me say, I think we ought to pick, you know, if we're going to try to get in with them, we need to pick carefully and do the thing that's most important because you know how long it's taken us to get that other part of Mack Hatcher.
I've got Alderman Martin.
I don't want to be short-sighted, but I don't, I don't feel as passionate about getting to Mack Hatcher as I do getting to the park. Last summer, there was a group of people on Main Street that I spoke to, uh, from London. And they wanted to walk to, to Carnton. They wanted to walk to the Eastern Flank. And I said, I'm sorry, you can't do it. They said, we are going to do it. And I said, no, you're not. You will be killed. You, you will be killed on Hills, on Lewisburg Pike if you do that. So I would, I am totally in favor of the 12-foot wide multi-trail, multi-use trail to the park.
Do you have a final comment, Alderman Berger, before we go to public comment?
Did you take them? I guess I know. Uh, so, so Paul, there are two different totally funding mechanisms for that.
Yes.
So if we would apply for that, it wouldn't impede our ability to apply for the others, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I just want to.
Sure. Alderman Blanton.
When I'm talking about going all the way to Mack Hatcher, I'm talking about going ahead and doing the design.
Be planned for.
I'm not at all saying that we need to fund it all the way to Mack Hatcher right now. I just want to make sure you understood what I'm.
That's good.
Yeah. And I'm talking about doing all the design. Okay.
Okay. We have a number of citizens that want to speak on this issue. And the first one is, uh, Josh Wingstrom. Uh, we'll give everybody two minutes. And following that will be Tori Barnhill. Following that will be Jamie Parker. Following that will be Rich Buckner. Following that will be Tom Miller. And following that will be Ellie Chin. So your two minutes is starting.
All right. I'll try and be as fast as I can with the two minutes. I'm, uh, thank you for having me up here to speak today. And I've, I've had a few experiences since coming to Franklin. I'm not actually from here originally. I grew up in an Amish town. My father told me when I left, he said, uh, wherever you go, whatever you do, as a technologist, I can stay in the Amish town. Uh, just give back as much to the community as they give to you and you'll be welcome. So I moved to Franklin about six years ago and, uh, and part of that process, I've gotten involved with a whole bunch of weird random things that all add up to, to this project right here. So I thought it'd be important to come down and share a few of these experiences with you. Um, I started a company here in Franklin about four years ago and it's a small company, but I'm proud of it. One thing I'm proud of is we pay all of our employees enough that they can live in Franklin and they can live in Franklin with a spouse not working. And, um, one of the, because I think it's important if you've got a business that serves the community, that your employees live in that community. However, I've had a challenge getting my employees to want to live here. And the biggest challenge has been connectivity. And that's, that's the one I hear over and over and over again. But I, I do feel a debt to the people that built this city and built all this wonderful infrastructure and such a great place to, to build a business and, and build a community and, um, be involved with it. So, um, one of the things I, I look at as we look forward on this, uh, there, there's a few great reasons to go for number four here. And I think it's because 20 years from now, when people look back on, on us today, they're gonna thank us for doing four. Uh, a couple of other things I've been involved with is the Franklin Homeowners, uh, Alliance, or the Franklin Alliance of Homeowner Associations, which I think Rick's gonna talk about a little more. But the, uh, Rich is gonna talk about a little bit more. But, uh, I also live in Polk Place, which is right at the end of this. And I was part of their, I was the president of their homeowners association for a while. And there would be some appetite, I believe, for taking a trail through there to get to Mack Hatcher as a shortcut, not necessarily through the neighborhood, but we have some woods there. The, additionally, the, um, I have Polk Place through there. Polk Place actually has a biking group of people that ride to downtown, uh, frequently. And they have a running group out there as well. And both of them are people that jog to downtown, which to your point, and I've been part of both of these, is asking to be run over by a car. So I guess that's the end of my two minutes, but, uh, I just want to say thank you all for building such a wonderful community to come join us. I really do owe you for it because I think people will thank us later for it.
Thank you.
It's already on. You're good.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come talk with y'all. Friends of Franklin Parks is very excited at this potential, um, design concept. And we're here in support of option number four. And to re, I mean, uh, there've been some great points made and to, to mirror what Alderman, um, Blanton has to say, and, and for the sake of my two minutes and cutting it short, I just want to tell you a few reasons why we think this is very important. Um, it connects. Do I need to do that? It's very important for our residents. It's very important for our visitors. Um, it's connecting historic parks. It's, it's connecting downtown Franklin to a park. It is checking a lot of boxes of filling in some gaps between, um, parks, um, which you've heard many times over and over, we're deficit in. And I, I really would implore us to look long-term and not just at designing phase just for part of it, but all the way down like Brandy mentioned. It could be phased in, in completion. It could be 10 years down the road and, and not outside of the capital investment plan. Um, but if you look at it long-term and you plan long-term, along the way, you can find partners. You can find, we developed this, this trail logo and that, that is very appealing for sponsorships. I mean, it's just now starting what can happen for the city. And I think in the future, we're going to be connected and people can get places safely and take people off the road and get them to destinations via bike. And, and at Pilgrimage's past weekend, I mean, I almost felt out of place walking and all the bikes getting there. So we're all moving in the right direction. So I'm really hopeful that, that we look long-term and go with option four. Um, and then we also welcome the opportunity to discuss later phasing, if you're looking for partnerships and who could, needs to come to the table. So I just wanted to share that with y'all and just thank you. Is that two minutes or less?
Perfect.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, admittedly, I come without the benefit. I'm sorry. I'm Jamie Parker. And admittedly, I come without the benefit of your experience and, and knowing how everything works. But my hope would be that if option four is something that can be approved and permitted and then allow time to phase it in, not only do you have the opportunity, uh, to seek grant money, but as Tori indicated, you have that opportunity to seek partnerships, um, whereby, uh, we can, uh, try to fill in that gap. And, um, Friends of Franklin Parks obviously, uh, has a history now of filling in those gaps and, and working together with the city. And we're thankful for that opportunity. There, we wouldn't be able to commit to a number because we wouldn't know what that number would be today. We wouldn't know what the circumstances would be around it then. But, um, my hope would be that it could be approved and permitted. And then based on budgeting, based on grant money, based on, uh, public-private partnerships, have the ability to phase that in. So that would be the ask. So thank you.
Mr. Buckner. Wow, don't hurt yourself. We need a wider trail to the desk tonight.
Uh, I'm Rich Buckner. I live in, uh, 411 Value View Drive on the east side of Franklin. Uh, I represent, uh, a coalition or an alliance of 14 communities on the southeast sector in Ward Three. And so I'm here to speak for all of them. Josh is one of the members. Tom is one of the members of the communities. Uh, we've got over 7,000 homes we represent. And the whole idea of what we did, uh, in coming together was exactly for this kind of thing, to promote things that are better for the southeast part of Franklin and Ward Three, uh, for all of our communities. This trail or this, this sidewalk or connector through this part of the community is exactly what we're looking for from a standpoint of the connectivity that we need to start to have in the southeast sector in Ward Three. Uh, and then also, I'm also a, uh, Civil War Commissioner. And so the, the opportunity of connecting our Carter Hill Park and, and, and Carter House, Lotes House with Carnton and that type of thing, we strongly believe that option four is, we, we would like to see that happen. So I represent all of those and, and I just wanted to say that I, I really enthused about seeing where this is going and, and what opportunities that brings to our community. So thank you very much. I'll try to not trip going out here.
Tom?
I'm gonna go down here where it's a little bit safer. I was very pleased, I'm Tom Miller, 1328 Carnton Lane. I was very pleased to, uh, hear the positive comments about, uh, option four coming from the Alderman. Uh, I want, and as, uh, I do have a vested interest in, uh, the extension of the sidewalk and trails as a resident of Heath Place. But I want to address something else, uh, take a little bit different approach, uh, in favor of option four. Uh, Alderman Martin, uh, unfortunately, you're not downtown enough because I see all kinds of people walking on Lewisburg Pike. You don't stop them all. Uh, and it is very dangerous and it's mostly tourists. Uh, those of us that live here, no, don't walk on Lewisburg Pike, but the visitors do. I'm not an attorney, but I am quite familiar with risk and risk management. And before you make a decision on anything short of option four, I would suggest you contact or, uh, have dialogue with your attorney. Because a sidewalk, uh, could be, uh, an attractive nuisance. People start down the sidewalk. It comes to an end and they're trapped there on Lewisburg Pike at some point. Uh, and I, I, again, not being an attorney, I don't know what liability that may impart to the city. But if you take the trail all the way to at least the, the out, uh, side of, uh, the Eastern Flank, uh, people have a way to go safely and get off of, off of Lewisburg. So, uh, thank you for the support that you've expressed. Uh, we think this is a good project. Uh, I know money is not an issue. I know you talk about money, but I know money is not an issue. The funds are there or can be found. Uh, one last thing, I would do, would not want this project to be slowed down. I, I would not want to do anything that would slow it down. But consider a trail along the river. Thank you.
Ms. Ellie.
Good evening. Ellie Chin. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the visitor, so not about trails or Arts Commission or anything else. But, um, in our top 10 questions from visitors is can I walk to Carnton? Easy. Uh, unfortunately, they can't. I'm afraid that if we don't build a trail that goes all the way to Carnton, they are gonna walk it as far as it goes and then they are gonna get stuck. And then they are gonna walk an unsafe path to get the rest of the way there. So. And, and then as Margaret says, they're going to be killed. So, um, which would be really bad for our visitor business overall. Um, so anyway, I just, I'm not gonna take my whole two minutes and I, I just want to say that I appreciate that you're taking a look at option four because it is a need from our visitor community that we here in the visitor center every day. So thank you for being open to having that discussion.
Thank you. Think you've got some direction from the board?
I think those points were very well taken, Ellie. And, um, Tom, that your, uh, comments about stopping the trail, uh, possibly because tourists will walk there and then they'll have to find the rest of their way. And I think that's very, um, unwise. And I think we should make sure we're considering that.
Alderman Martin.
I am so pleased that people want option four. I wouldn't have dared ask for option four. I thought I was doing well to ask for option three. So if everybody wants option four, I'm, count me in.
Okay. Item five, Resolution 2019 dash 90, uh, to amend the 401 defined contribution retirement plan in the form of a ICMA Retirement Corporation Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust.
This item's really a cleanup related to our, um, uh, complement to the Tennessee retirement system that our employees who have hi, been hired since January 1 of 2017 are a part of. Uh, a, as you may remember, we've put in place an optional, uh, 401, uh, deferred compensation. It's actually a 457 program where they can put 2% in and we'll match it up to a, a, a matching 2%. Uh, when we originally did the document, it matched the five-year vesting that's part of the, the retirement system. That was really not our intent. Our intent was to make it, uh, you know, be vested at two years when the employees were able to enter into the deferred compensation program. So this essentially cleans that up um, and gets us to what had been our original intent. Did go through the, uh, pension, uh, committee and they unanimously supported, uh, this modification to get us to a, um, a, a vesting or a, a full participation at the two-year work anniversary. So Christine, anything else?
The one thing I would add is this is a voluntary program, unlike the, this Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System Pension, which is a mandatory program. So we had proposed the two-year vesting to encourage participation from employees early in their careers. And we, we believe that the rec, to, to have a two-year vesting, we encourage these employees to voluntary, uh, voluntarily join the program early in their careers and begin saving for retirement.
The other point with this is, it, it, two reasons I, I felt strongly that we wanted to include this is one, uh, it does help, um, level the playing field a little bit between our employees that are part of the closed system and the employees that are part of the new system. This is a little bit of a sweetener that gets them a little closer in comparison to their colleagues that are in the closed city pension, uh, system. And also just in the market, it is a competitive, I think it helps us from a benefit, competitive benefit standpoint to offer this. And as Christine said, it's totally voluntary. People can go, you could, they can modify their 1%, 2% based on what they, uh, feel they can, uh, set aside. But it is a nice, uh, opportunity to give our, our, our team members and, and the two years again was, our intent all along, it just got written differently when we started it off.
Item six, Status Report of the Resource, Human Resources Manual Update.
So we'll have Shawna come up and join us as Laura, along with Kevin. Uh, this has been a long-time, uh, project that we've been working on. And Kevin will take you through that. And, and we want to walk you through some basics tonight. We've given you, uh, the, the most recent draft of this and, and are doing a few very minor wording tweaks. tweaks still, but would like to bring this to you for consideration for a vote at our next meeting, if you're comfortable. So we'll walk through some of the changes and updates at a high level tonight and answer any questions you might have, and I'll let Kevin take it away.
All right, thank you. I'm Kevin Towns, Director of HR. With me is Laura Johnson, our Employee Relations Specialist. Natasha Parker couldn't be with us today, and then Shawna's also going to help us describe what we've done. What we've done is, we've started, the current manual was updated 2011. That's eight, nine years ago when it was drafted. Therefore, it's fallen behind, it doesn't suit our needs anymore, it's outdated. So what we've done is, let me walk you through how we got to what we did. What we did first was, we told the leadership team, it was time to update the manual. And from the leadership team, we asked for people to meet with the HR team if they had any suggestions for revisions. And then when they, those who did volunteer, which was just about everybody in the leadership team, we interviewed everyone one-on-one. Laura, Natasha, and myself interviewed them about their thoughts about how the manual should be revised. And then with that, we would meet with Shawna and Eric to decide of those changes, which ones made sense. And that's what we did. Once we found which ones made sense, we drafted language, brought it back to the leadership team, threw out some potential changes. They gave us more feedback. We'd meet again, the HR team with Eric and Shawna, and then we've, that's what we have now, is a manual that has all those changes, all those inputs. And then also Shawna took a lot of ownership over the attachment. Also, someone from her team is an excellent proofreader, so that's what we have today. All right, so what we've done is, let me go through a couple of the changes. We updated the new hire probationary period. Previously, employees were only allowed to use sick and vacation time after they had been here six months. It's tough to do. We've taken away that prohibition, so now they're allowed to take it as they accrue it. Another thing would be, employees are allowed to apply for externally posted positions as those positions come up, and remove that prohibition against being able to move until you've been here for a year. So we've relaxed that. Then with vacation leave, that's something in which we didn't change the top out of the 16 hours or 24 hours, we just allowed people to get there sooner. Previously, it took every five years you'd get a jump in terms of how many vacation hours you would accrue. Now we've decreased that to about three years on most of the levels, as you see there, to where you still top out the same, but you can get there quicker. I think that makes us more competitive in terms of recruiting. The next area would be disciplinary changes. Currently, let's say we have a hearing, the department director has five days to do the following: write a decision, get it to me, the Human Resources Director, for approval, get it to Eric for approval, and then submit it in writing to the employee. In five days, if somebody's on vacation, that's nearly impossible. So what we decided to do was increase that to 10 days. That's what we've done. That's our suggestion. The next one would be, we've had new policies too. A bullying policy, that wasn't envisioned back in 2010, 2011. Working from home wasn't something that was done very often back then. Now we have a policy that would allow people, under certain circumstances, to actually work from home. Some of the deleted policies are the policy on garnishments. We still don't realize that garnishments occur, or we're taking that away as being a disciplinary factor unless, except for those rare times in which a department has to make that disciplinary measure. Updated policies was the dress code. And the big thing here is, we want to focus on three things: neat, clean, professional. That's what the dress code policy should be about. The other policy that needed to be changed is the nepotism policy. We clarified that supervisors are not allowed to date people that work for them. And then another policy that we have is, we don't hire people that currently are related to people that work in the city, but things happen, people can get married, and all of a sudden, people are now related. And so we've clarified how we're going to address that, preferably different departments, and if they're in the same department, different divisions, clearly no relatives should supervise another relative. Next was the vehicle use policy. Presently, would say that the vehicles that are take-home vehicles couldn't leave the county. Well, that means that if you drove south and got to Spring Hill, you'd see our vehicles parked there when people live very close to where they're parked. It's not ideal, they're left in parking lots, that's ripe for vandalism, so our proposal is that we extend it to a 35-mile radius. We found out that there was not an insurance problem there, it's okay that people actually drive it to their house, which might be outside the county. Another one would be the drug and alcohol testing policy. We simply needed to update that as the laws have changed in terms of that. And then a social media policy, that was never thought of eight to nine years ago. Now we have to have a social media policy. Bereavement leave, in the past, we had a, the bereavement leave that we give is never going to be enough for someone, if somebody that's close to them pass away. We understand that. But in the past, we had a policy that if they were your immediate family, you get three days, non-immediate family, two days.
One day.
I'm sorry, one day, you're right. So now what we've done is, we've, one, increased the scope of what constitutes family. So it's not just if someone related to the employee passes, but let's say the employee is married, their spouse is relative, that should count also as far as bereavement leave. So we've updated that. And we've taken away the three-day, two-day, it's three days, up to three days. And then the final one is one I think Shawna wants to speak on, and by the way, if there's something I left out, please feel free to add that. I think Shawna, you want to talk about the very last thing?
This is pretty simple. We added a provision, and it's also going to be in the resolution that adopts the policy, that would allow the city administrator to approve certain things and make certain changes inside of the document. There are times when our procedures change or the law changes, and we just have to make changes within the HR manual. That doesn't necessarily have to come before you to consider, it's just the way we do business. We really haven't updated this policy since, what'd you say, nine years ago?
Right.
Yeah, nine years ago. And a lot of things have changed, and so instead of updating the policy, we've kind of just worked around it. And that's not the most ideal way to do it either. So for example, when we purchased Kronos, how we input things, change terminology, and it changes process just a little, enough that we should have changed the manual at the time, but we didn't because it took so much time and effort, and really, it's something the city administrator should do. He is in charge of the day-to-day activities of the city and of the employees, so it just makes sense.
So overall, we've tried to clarify, streamline some of these elements, get rid of some things that no longer really were relevant to how we operate. As was referenced, there are some areas where the law just specifically changed in these areas, and this is getting us more aligned. And as Shawna talked about, we'd like to have at least some measure of authority for us to clean up things that just naturally change and are part of a process so that we don't have to go back through a full rewrite to get it back to you, but that we can take care of those. Obviously, things that had broader financial impact, et cetera, would need to come to you and may have a component that deals with both a budgetary decision but also may translate into an HR manual update as well. So there's been a ton of work that has gone into this, Laura, Natasha, Kevin, Shawna have put hours and hours into this. And as Kevin detailed for you at the beginning, we tried to gather a lot of input so that this would be more relevant and work better for our people, be more understandable, clean up things that have been either confusing or just outdated. And so I think it puts us in a much better place, but we welcome any questions or feedback you have for us at this stage. And again, our goal was to try to get it adopted. With your action, you can do it through a resolution, and that would go into effect immediately with one exception, the change in vacation accrual would not happen until the first of the calendar year. And that's just a system, computer system process that makes more sense to do at that specific timeframe. Everything else from a policy or manual standpoint would take place upon adoption.
Alderman Berger, then I've got Alderman Branshaw.
Thank you. So let me clarify a couple of things. No family member can, is it true that no family member could apply or be hired if a spouse or family member worked within the entire city?
It really describes within the department that they're in, and what we run into specifically a lot of times is, people may get married, and how do we deal with that? And so we want to encourage that that is fully disclosed, and then that we then describe how they're never in the same, you know, line of authority or within the city, so that you don't have any concern around, you know, any favoritism or different treatment that way.
Right, that's not actually what I'm talking about. What if you had somebody that worked in HR? Well, let's not do HR.
Can't be HR.
Let's not do HR. Let's say somebody worked in the water department, and someone was in the streets department or worked as a police officer. We don't allow that?
I said that wrong, I didn't say it correctly. We mean in the same department.
Just department.
Right.
Okay, because you were talking about that, but I just wanted to clarify that again because to me, that wouldn't really, I wouldn't want to see that because I think we have a number of people that have worked here.
Yes, within the department is the restriction.
Yeah, okay, got it. You also said something about dress code, focus on neat, clean, and professional. Does professional also mean appropriate?
Yes, it does. Let me talk a little bit about this one. This was very near and dear to my heart because the existing dress code is very specific, and it's very specific.
Down to shoes.
Yeah, down to shoes, down to a skirt length that the city administrator would have to judge. It's really, it's very detailed and it's very...
Good luck with that.
It's very gender-specific, let's put it that way. So what we tried to do is make it more understandable, and like Kevin said, focus on neat, clean, and professional, and that does include appropriate. So this makes it a more straightforward thing. It does have something that we've had in the previous manual, which is some examples of what we mean by business casual or what we mean by these different elements. So we'll continue to have that to help give people direction, but it got rid of some of these very specific limitations, and we need to be, give people good overall guidance and hopefully also allow for common sense to help guide us as well.
And I also think, I agree with that, I also think it's really important to help people look when they're out in the public and they're representing our city, so dress appropriate. And the last question I had was, you talk about social media policy. How are you handling that? Give me some ideas of how that, I'm not asking you to go into detail and to give me the whole policy, but generally, how are you handling social media, digital media in general?
Well, fortunately, that has not been, we have not had a problem with that at this juncture. I think what we're trying to do is trying to get ahead of it. Like just now, companies are deciding they need to have a social media policy. People are going to, can be held responsible for the things they post, but we haven't had issues of that that I can recall since I've been here.
Now, would that be, being held responsible for things they post about work, city, things like that, but not personal?
It could be personal as well.
Could be. If it's inappropriate or something, or reflects badly upon an employee, which also then reflects poorly on the city, possibly?
And it'll depend on how they do it. So if they're posting while they're at work...
Which is probably a...
Well, you can post while you're at work, so long as it's not on behalf of the city. So it makes it very clear that we have two communication specialists, which is Melissa and Charlie for the police department, and only those two people can speak on behalf of the city.
Right.
And so it kind of makes it clear about that. You do have the right to speak on issues, and employees have the right to do that. There are times, though, when it might cross a boundary, and this will make it clear how we handle that.
So the other last question I have with that is, are we willing to be a little lenient if it's something that's not totally blatant and horrendous? Is it your policy that you would be more lenient and give them a warning? And be able to speak with them before you threw the book at them?
I would hope that would be the case, that some things would just be, something we could correct.
Well, our discipline process isn't changing. You know, there's still a progressive discipline that we have in the manual, you know, hopefully written reprimands, counseling, you know, before we ever get to a termination. And this wouldn't really change that unless it's harassment. So if someone were saying something harassing to a coworker or about a coworker, that could be different, but it should follow the same progressive discipline.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Branshaw.
Kind of make sure and see if, how did employees participate in this process? Were they a part of it, or is the department head or a volunteer group, were there any employees that actually participated in looking at the manual? Was that not part of the course?
We relied on our departmental leadership to reflect on where they've had questions, concerns, and so we had a pretty lengthy process where we asked folks to give us their feedback, but we put that responsibility on the department directors to give us topics that they thought needed to be clarified or addressed. And so that's really how we worked it back through to get feedback.
I don't see anything really punitive, more like embellishments to some of the employees, more bereavement days or up to a certain amount. You know, you can only, grandma can die only so many times before you need to use those days.
And by the way, that's a policy too that we had to change. You only had a certain amount of times you could use bereavement.
Twice in a year.
Twice in a year. But to answer your question, Eric...
Because we sometimes hear from staff or employees, like, well, you know, they changed that, nobody told us, whatever. There will be a communication of these changes.
And training.
Yeah, we'll do training once this is adopted. We'll go through some specific overview for everybody so they understand how to access it, what to look at, and what significant changes are there. And we think, pretty much everything we've tweaked adds clarity or really elevates, provides a better benefit than what is there now.
Well, I know you all do a good job.
Well, thank you. And to answer your question, you are correct, that it was through leadership we asked them to solicit stuff from their employees. We weren't going to be able to talk to all 700 employees.
Alderman Barnhill.
Two issues, two things that you're changing. Number one, when you're going, where somebody can bid another job in six months instead of a year, does the current person, supervisor, have to sign off on anything? In other words, if I'm working for you, would you have signed off for me to bid on this job if it was only six months? And the reason I say that is because generally speaks, maybe I'm not generally, you use that time to evaluate the performance of someone and whether they've married a uptick in another job, whether they've married, of being able to bid another job. So that's what I was looking at on that. And the second thing is, to answer, that the 35-mile take-home policy is a long way from Franklin.
And we have a lot of employees that live farther away, and so that's a part of a recognition on that, and so that folks would not have to park at one place and could take it to their homes, and that, we think, protects the vehicle better and is a little more convenient for the folks that we, again, authorize to take a car home, that it's appropriate.
70 miles of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On the applying for the position, the way it's written right now is it's prohibited unless the city administrator grants approval, and so I've been granting those approvals. And the way it's specifically written is, if we're externally posting the position, meaning we're welcoming people from outside the organization to apply for that job, we're saying our internal people ought to be able to apply for it too. And, you know, we would always consider if that's creating a hardship on the existing department they're in, that still can be something that is factored in to whether that makes sense to do at that time, but we rather give our people a chance along with outside candidates if it's something they're really interested in. And, you know, we're really all about getting talent into the organization, and if we can get them in the right spot where they can really flourish, that's good. And sometimes, that ideal job comes up sooner than you expected it for somebody, and we didn't want to hold people back, especially if we were open to bringing in outside people for that job, why wouldn't we consider people that are already with us?
I don't think you ever said no, because it just made...
I never did, so we just said, let's make it part of the policy, and there is a potential that you've invested time in training and getting somebody up to speed, but if they're committed to staying with the city, we still think there's a long-term benefit to us.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session at 6:30.
No.
At 6:30.
Okay.
At 6:30 PM.
But there's no motion to do that.
Well, I'm thoroughly confused. Would you tell me? I asked for a motion to go into executive session at 6:30 PM.
But you're at a work session, and technically, you're not at a voting meeting, so you wouldn't have a motion at a work session.
I'll see y'all in the back at 6:30. So that's all we need to do, is just meet in the back at 6:30?
No.
All right, clarify.
No, so what you need to do is you just need to come back here at 6:30, you'll enter into your special meeting, then you'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session. That's what you do.
It's been noted for 6:30.
You have a special meeting notice, we just need to... You have a special meeting notice, we just need to...
We'll be back in here at 6:29.
So, be here at 6:30. You don't even need to sit down, be right up there.
Notice here with given, a special meeting of the City of Franklin Board of Mayor and Alderman will be held on Tuesday, September 24, 2019. The special meeting will be held at 6:30 PM in the Boardroom of City Hall 109, Third Avenue South, Franklin, Tennessee, for the following purpose: adjourned to an executive session.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Would you specify at 6:30 PM?
At 6:30, please.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously.
6:29.